The first order of business, as always, will be for everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you don't have a flag near you, just point towards City Hall. Let's see if we're synchronized better this week. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Can we have roll call, please, Venus?
Yeah. Good evening. Chair Baldino.
Here.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Wingate.
Here.
Commissioner Heschler.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Keldoff is absent tonight.
Next on the agenda is Public Communications. I'll announce that prior to the meeting, we received three items, letters, electronic. Besides that, are there any other electronic or other communications the DIAS received? Venus, was it just the three that we've received already?
It was just the three.
Okay. And is there anyone in council chambers wishing to address the Planning Commission this evening? Is it just you, Eduardo? Is your mic on, Eduardo? Can you confirm there's no one in chambers? Just nod your head if you agree that there's no one there. Okay. So since there's no one in chambers, Nicky.
Now he's blink once.
Yeah.
Two people.
Okay, great. Great. Let's hope we can hear them. Now, open Public Communications. The first person, you're welcome to step up to the designated area and tell us your name and what you're here to talk about. Can you unmute? Wait, before you start, sir, we need to unmute Public Communications so we can hear the gentleman.
Can you copy me now? Good afternoon.
I can. Welcome and thank you for wearing a mask.
Yes, I did. And now I've removed it. My name is Victor Valdez. I'm a resident of El Segundo. I've lived here for over seventeen years. And I've worked in the South Bay for over forty-five years. I'm a member and I live on the street of Ellen Point in the city of El Segundo. And my concern is, and I'm expressing a concern regarding planned development in the area of Kansas and Grand. And at this time, as a member of, a citizen of our community, but also a member of our Homeowners Association Board, I am opposed to this particular project. It's the old internal rectifier building that's on the south, actually the east side of the street at Kansas and Grand. Our community is directly across the street or adjacent a few yards from this particular proposed project. We're concerned about, number one, and most importantly, the impact on traffic. Number two, the noise pollution. The health and safety of the community. We, on this particular street alone, Ellen Point, has over twenty young children. So this is a very important environmental safety issue that I'm concerned about. The previous environmental safety report that was done in 2018 covered the Smoky Hollow area, which is an area north, south of Grand, not the residential area, which is located where a project is proposed, which is north of Grand in Kansas. Besides the dust and debris and the hazardous waste, there are several airborne particles that will be dispersed in this particular area and region. With the asbestos of this old building and the common lead paint that's out there, it's very concerning. Adjacent to this project is also a small little park here at Kansas, and I believe it's Holly. And it's well attended by young families in our community. And this project will have a devastating impact on the residents that live in this particular area. So it's a, it's a, it's of a high concern. And the other associations are preparing and discussing this amongst their own boards, which is the Grand Tropez project, as well as the Kansas and Grand project. And again, they are, well, will also be impacted because the other project, which is south of Grand in Kansas, is, is also going to be impacted, but definitely the project, which is adjacent to our property on the east side of Kansas and Grand, is our main concern. If anything, they should reevaluate any type of construction in that area, and them doing demolition during this time of COVID times and Zoom, the majority of children are being educated at this time between daytime hours, between eight AM and three PM in the afternoon, when teachers are giving the lessons to the young children. So any noise, any disturbances of that nature, especially in demolition, is very concerning to myself as a grandparent and community resident. I'm also over sixty-five, so I fall into the category of senior citizens. So again, health and safety is, is of dire importance for all of us in today's times. And I'd like to thank all of you, first and foremost, for allowing me to make a statement and a presentation regarding this particular matter. The representative that I was in communication to has been very professional. Eduardo is very courteous and polite. And he is going to forward to me the report, which I asked for, which was the environmental study report. If anything, it definitely needs to be reconsidered and reevaluated because there are homes now and residents that live in that immediate area. And definitely, there's also businesses east of this location, which I believe borders Kansas and then Washington to the east, which may have an impact. So if anything, that should be where any type of traffic, if they're going to allow traffic to come into that areas with a parking structure, et cetera, is something that needs to be evaluated. Currently, Kansas itself, when you go southbound from Grant, is already packed with traffic due to the factories that are located along there, along with the government office that's located one block north of Kansas, or excuse me, south of Kansas. Again, thank you for your time. Again, Victor Valdez. I've given my information to the Director of Building and Planning. He's, he and I have communicated for other reasons. I was commending some of their employee staff. Again, thank you very much for your time and have a great day.
Mr. Valdez, thank, thank you for attending Planning Commission and sharing your thoughts. I'm sure you know this is on our agenda, but at the request of the applicant, the item that you're discussing is going to be continued to November twelfth.
Yes, by name, I certainly appreciate it. What was your name again, sir?
Ryan Baldino.
Okay, Ryan, thank you very much for being attentive to my, to my statement. And again, this is a, we're definitely opposed to it, myself, Ryan, and again, I speak on behalf of myself and our Homeowners Association here on Ellen Point. And I am in communication with the other two associations and I'm waiting for their response. And most likely, they will be here again. You said November what?
November twelfth.
And is that at the same time?
It'll be at the same time. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Hello, sir. Please state your name and tell us what you're here to talk about.
Hi, I'm John Power. I live right across the street from the project. I live at three 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 Kansas Street. I was involved in instrumental in purchasing and building the eighteen homes across the street. So went through some of the environmental impact and a variety of other things, but that was eighteen years ago. I'm here to almost echo the same sentiments of Victor. I, I think pretty much he said all the things we'd like to say. But more than anything, I can't believe that the person that owns this property is building office buildings and possibly the worst time you could be building office buildings, not to mention the fact that a pro forma of twenty-four homes could easily be put there easily starting at a hundred and, one point five million to two million dollars a home, which I think would be way better for the city of El Segundo as far as having residential property. Other than that, I think Victor's sentiments are pretty much, I have the same, but all I can say is I'm right across the street and I'm very conscious of it. And all I could think of is, if you lived right across the street from this, would you rather have one point five million dollar homes in a nice residential area or office building where you can have transient people coming all the time, day and night? I'll leave it at that. And I appreciate you guys' time and, and listening to us. And I think that's it for now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powers, for speaking to us.
All right. Thanks for listening to me.
You're welcome, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Okay. Bye, guys.
All right. Is there anyone else in council chambers tonight wishing to address the Planning Commission?
All right, I'm gonna play musical chairs here. I hope you, you guys can hear me now.
We can hear you now, sir, yeah. Anyone else, Eduardo, wishing to address us?
No, that was it. That was it. And theoretically, they should have probably waited until the item was called, but you know.
No, it's fine.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Eduardo. I will now close Public Communications. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. We're being asked to approve two past meeting minutes, and then there is a administrative termination regarding veterinary clinics. And you know what? I would like to pull Item Three. You have a question on that? Anyone else wish to make any changes or adjustments to the meeting minutes? If not, I'll accept the Consent Calendar with respect to Items E1 and E2. Okay, I've got, I'll do Brenda with the motion and Jay with the second. All those in favor will do a roll call vote now, Venus, if you could.
Yes, Chair Baldino.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wingate.
Aye.
Commissioner Heschler.
Aye.
And Commissioner Keldoff is absent.
Thank you, Venus. All right. So the meeting minutes have been approved. Next is the call items from the Consent Calendar. And what we're talking about here is an administrative determination for veterinary clinics. First, I want to just commend staff. I appreciate the efforts to interpret our city codes and statutes in such a manner to allow as many businesses as possible. But my question is kind of like pragmatically, is it possible to have a veterinary clinic where you can't have the dog or cat stay overnight? I mean, I know I've had animals that stay at a vet for several days after surgery. So is this, is there some type of limitation where this type of veterinary clinic is only for day use and there'd be no boarding?
That's correct. The, the city was approached by a potential tenant at the old Raytheon site and the new development taking place there and explained that their business does not include overnight boarding. So they operate only, you know, in the daytime, if they have to do anything like surgeries where they, a patient has to stay overnight, then they would refer that to another location.
Okay, so the, the applicant is a pre-existing business and they've been made well aware there will be no overnight board?
That's correct.
All right. I'm just concerned about the noise. I understand why we would not want overnight boarding in that area. All right. Thank you, Paul, for answering my questions. Any other questions on this call item?
Yeah, I've, I do have a question. So there are currently, I don't know, four or five other dog boarding spots in Smoky Hollow, you know, along El Segundo Boulevard. And this is for, the block of four hundred east, El Segundo, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, is that not part of the Smoky Hollow specific plan or is it?
It is not. It is east of PCH at the, at the Raytheon campus.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. East of PCH. I'm, I'm new to maps, apparently. I was looking, I was looking on the, on the west, on the west side, so much closer to Main Street. So my, my apologies. Okay.
No, it's, it's a good point, Jay, because I, I believe that when we redid the Smoky Hollow plan, we were trying to eliminate kennels and the like, and the ones that are here are legally non-conforming, correct?
And that is correct, yes.
Okay, so they were in before we just tried to decide to change everything and update.
And then, just for Commissioner Heschler's knowledge, just to clarify, this is not a proposed kennel or overnight boarding facility.
I understand.
Okay, terrific.
All right. Thank you, Jay. And I'll make a motion to approve Consent Item EA twelve ninety-three Administrative Determination AD twenty oh one for veterinary clinics. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We'll now take a roll call vote. Venus, please. Aye.
Vice Chair Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wingate.
Yes.
Commissioner Heschler.
Aye.
And of course, Commissioner Keldoff is absent.
All right. Thank you, Venus. Next on the agenda is Written Communications. We've already discussed the three items the Planning Commission has received, which will bring us to new business. The first item is the Catalyst EA twelve forty-two, which is the development at two thirty-three Kansas Street and one fifty-two East Grand Avenue. And according to our agenda, we've been requested to continue this item to November twelfth, twenty twenty meeting. So unless there's any discussion, I'll accept a motion to continue this item.
I make a motion, we continue this item until November twelfth.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Chair Baldino.
Aye.
Start video, let's see.
I'm sorry. Chair Baldino, Vice Chair Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wingate.
Aye.
Commissioner Heschler.
Aye.
And Commissioner Keldoff is absent.
All right. Motion passes. That item will be taken up at the November twelfth, twenty twenty meeting at five thirty. Next on our agenda is an item by Plaza El Segundo and Point Development, Modification Development Agreement EA twelve seventy-nine. And can we have a staff report on this item, please?
Um, yes, commissioners, I will be giving the presentation on this particular item and give me a moment to share my screen and put my presentation up. Okay, so if you can all see my screen, the item before you is a request for an amendment to the Development Agreement and the conditions of approval that apply to the Plaza El Segundo and the Point Development Project. First, I'll start with a little description of the property. Here you see an aerial photograph of the subject property located at the northeast corner of Rosecrans Avenue and Pacific Coast Highway. The Point is on the south side and Plaza El Segundo is on the north side. And the combined area of the two centers is approximately fifty-two acres. And the building area of the two centers is approximately five hundred thousand square feet. The uses on, at these centers are primarily retail sales, but also include a grocery store, some service uses, fitness facilities, and some general and dental medical office uses. When this development first occurred and was first, first approved, the intent was for this to become a, a primary source of sales tax revenue for the city. And that's why the permitted uses were primarily retail sales uses. And the subject request today specifically involves a topic of retail uses versus non-retail uses, or more specifically, as they're termed in the Development Agreement, sales tax generating uses and non-sales tax generating uses. For simplicity, I will continue to use the terms retail and non-retail. Now, most of the commissioners were here about three years ago when the commission reviewed and recommended approval of the last set of changes to the entitlements for this particular project. At the time, the city approved amendments to the permitted uses to allow a bigger mix of uses at these two shopping centers to expand beyond being simply a retail sales shopping center. And that has been a trend in shopping centers, you know, throughout the country. However, at the time, in order to sort of maintain this as a primary source of retail sales tax revenue, the city included a limit on the percentage of non-sales tax generating uses. That way, the centers would remain primarily retail sales in nature. This chart or this table is also in the staff report that you received. It shows a breakdown between those retail uses and the non-retail uses, the current actual percentages. What is allowed currently by the entitlements. And as you can see, for Plaza El Segundo, the non-retail uses are limited to a maximum of twenty percent of the building area. And for the Point, they're limited to thirty-five percent of the overall building area. What the applicant has requested is to change those percentages for both centers to a maximum of forty percent for non-retail types of uses. Now, to substantiate the need for this change, the applicant submitted a, a report and an analysis done by Cosmont Companies, a financial consultant. And you received this report and it is in your packet and it was discussed in our staff report. The basic conclusions of this study were that, well, locally, sales tax revenues have been declining gradually over the last ten years. At this center, there are increased vacancy rates and elsewhere, you know, in the retail sector in the area. This is primarily due to this trend, nationwide and worldwide trend of increasing online sales. And that was another of the conclusions in this Cosmont report, that over the last twenty years or so, online sales have increased as a proportion of the overall sales in our economy. And they are displacing sales at actual brick and mortar stores. And as a resort, as a result, shopping centers need to and have began to make efforts to address this, these trends, because there, these trends are anticipated to change, to continue. So shopping centers have been doing different things, including changing the mix of uses at the shopping centers, going away from being strictly retail and adding other uses that are complementary and that work together and support each other. This report by Cosmont was reviewed by staff and by a third-party consultant that the staff hired for this purpose. And our consultant was in agreement with the general findings of this Cosmont report, and so is staff. As a result, you know, our conclusions are the requested amendments will actually help this shopping center succeed. The applicant will be able to fill more of those vacancies so that we don't have long-term vacancies at the shopping center. And the variety in the mix of uses will, will allow businesses to kind of work together and benefit from each other. The city will also stand to benefit from this because this will kind of slow that downward trend in sales tax revenues and stabilize the city's revenues. And it will also help with the employment numbers in the city by providing new businesses at the shopping center, including offices, which the applicant actually has been working on attracting to the center already. The applicant has a presentation to make as well and is, is here tonight, and he will go over some of these issues as well, so I didn't want to take up too much time. But for these reasons, we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution before you and recommending approval by the city council. And I just want to mention that before you proceed, that I should correct an error in the packet for the record. In Attachment Six, which is the Development Agreement, Exhibit E is the project's conditions of approval. The request before us is to change the Development Agreement and those conditions of approval to, to that new percentage. And unfortunately, we did not make that edit in the conditions of approval, specifically Condition Number Forty. So with your permission, if you decide to recommend approval tonight, staff will update those conditions before the item is presented to the city council. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
So Paul, so I'm clear, you want us to, if we deem it fair, you want us to approve with Condition Forty as amended by, as recommended by staff?
Correct, yes.
All right. Thank you for the report, Paul. Any questions for Paul? If not, we'll open Public Communications on this item and the first right will go to the applicant.
I have a quick question, Ryan.
Sure.
That, that right there on the screen, we're, we're looking at, Paul, the, the project will benefit the city fiscally, which is a great thing, but the loss of sales tax with retail going down, how is it that that deficit is expected to be recovered? What, when you say that it'll benefit the city fiscally, it'll benefit the city in a lot of ways by having a healthy, vibrant business community. But if you lose sales tax and we have non-generating, non-retail sales happening, how does that then fiscally, how does a city view that they'll benefit fiscally from that?
Oh, that's a good question. And it's something that the staff had to consider in, in its recommendation. And the answer basically is that currently sales, retail sales are declining in our city and other, and, and regionally and nationally. And the city's sales tax revenues have been gradually declining. And they're expected to continue to decline unless some action is taken. And in this particular case, because it is hard to fill all these vacant spaces with retail businesses, the applicant hopes to attract offices and other non-retail uses. And what will happen as a result is, or we hope will happen as a result, is that those businesses will have employees and they will cater the existing, they will go to the existing retail businesses and restaurants at the center. they will go to the existing retail businesses and restaurants at the center. So even though the vacancies are not replaced with other retail stores, the employees at these other new businesses will visit the existing retail stores and thus help to stabilize the retail sales and the retail sales revenue, tax revenue for the city. I hope that helps explain the intent here. So it's, the benefit will be that it will hopefully reduce and stop that decline in retail sales tax revenue and then stabilize it. So that will be the benefit for the city.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other questions for Paul? All right, if not, we'll open Public Communication now and the first right will go to the applicant.
Okay, first, just Zoom protocol to see if people can actually hear me here.
Yes, Mr. McDonald, just tell us your name and go ahead and proceed.
I'm gonna just take a moment here to swap screens with staff here. So just give me a moment while I fiddle with my computer. Can people see my screen here?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Great. All right, I'll get started. Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Stuart McDonald of Federal Realty. And I'm joined this evening by my colleague Jeffrey Kreszek, who will also share in the presentation. As Paul mentioned, we were here a few years ago to discuss the same subject. And we're here again because the conditions of the retail market we outlined a few years ago have persisted and indeed worsened. We've read and agreed with Planning Staff's report and their ultimate conclusions. So we'll make our remarks here this evening brief. The name "Federal" has associations for some people and I sometimes feel I need to offer an explanation since the name doesn't really describe who we are and what we actually do. "Federal" has the sound of a remote anonymous agency, but I trust from Jeff and my interactions with city staff, they know us as very much a local and fully engaged property operator. As our logo indicates, we've been in business since 1962, making us one of the most established publicly traded REITs in the real estate industry with a focus on retail. We have over 100 properties nationwide that we operate, lease and manage. Our employees live, work, and shop in the communities that we have properties in. We feel it's essential that we see our properties every day to run them well. We need to understand when the parking lots are full, when a sign is broken, when the landscaping needs attention. We operate like a small, local business. We've always considered the South Bay retail market to be an attractive place to conduct business in. And finally, we had opportunity to invest here when we acquired Plaza El Segundo in 2011. In 2015, we completed the design and construction of the Point and stabilized it with a mix of tenants. It's a popular lifestyle center, which we remain very proud of. As Paul showed in one of his earlier slides, these properties really, in effect, sort of function as four different distinct areas. Starting with Phase 1A, which is Plaza El Segundo proper. Plaza El Segundo itself is the largest in that area with the most retail square footage, a large parking field, and a number of large format retailers, including the grocer. Which is this on the screen, if you can see my cursor. The Works, which is east of Allied Way, is a smaller shopping center. And finally, the Collection, which is south of Park Place here. And then finally, the Point, which borders Rosecrans and Pacific Coast Highway and is separated by the rail spur here, serving Chevron. The point of this slide really is just identifying that the distances, the large land area that we're talking about, the parking and street access and rail spur all sort of functionally separate these properties from one another. So they really operate as individual pieces and there isn't a lot of cross-shopping between these centers. The Point, on the subject of this property, I don't think that there's a lot to talk about on this property this evening. It's a mixed-use lifestyle center. It's new, attractive. We have a good balanced mix of uses, including office, restaurants, and shopping. And aside from COVID, we don't think that there's a lot of concern here. And we believe that the sales tax ratios as established early on are, for the most part, right. And with modest adjustments, we believe that the center will continue to do well. Moving on to Plaza, as mentioned earlier, this is a grocery-anchored center. It's a solid performer. It's got a number of complementary, large-format retails. And it provides for everyday consumer needs as well as occasional needs and has a relatively stable roster of tenants. That said, our goal is always to strengthen an already solid property. And when we see opportunities to bring in some stronger performers, we do so. As many of you may have known, we recently swapped out Cost Plus with a Nordstrom Rack, retailer that has much higher sales generating capacity than Cost Plus did. And furthermore, removed a non-sales tax generating use bank pad and replaced it with Ulta that you see here in this image. The Works was recently renovated and was in the process of re-tenanting as COVID hit. We had sort of a modernized aesthetic for the center. We cleared out years of sort of clutter and introduced some street trees, some lush plantings, outdoor furniture. And the $10 million renovation and re-tenanting plan really just does not gain traction in the retail market. Partly, it's hampered by the center's size and location and being cut off by Allied Way. "Federal" is really a retail-focused REIT. And if we believe that the opportunity to fill these spaces with retailers actually exists, we would be doing so. We just don't see that that opportunity exists any longer despite it being an attractive-looking center. With that, I'm gonna turn the mic over to my colleague Jeffrey Kreszek, who's gonna make a few more comments this evening. And Jeff, if you can just tell me when you're ready to advance slides, I will be your AV monitor this evening.
Thank you for having us this evening. To just sort of emphasize the point of what we're dealing with. And I think it's important to note, these systemic changes in retail were happening long before COVID hit. COVID, for lack of a better term, was like a can of gasoline on a fire that was already burning. Here's just a quick example. J.Crew, as you may have seen, had followed Chapter 11 bankruptcy. They have recently exited, but will need to be repositioned in this market. BCBG filed Chapter 11 and ceased all operations. We relocated Lululemon over to the Point as opposed to losing them to Manhattan Beach. Banana Republic, which is part of the Gap Corporation, announced on their Investor Day today that they plan on closing 350 Gap and Banana Republic stores over the next three years. BB closed. MAC moved to Manhattan Village. Anthropologie is gonna be leaving as well. So what you can see here is sort of a cascade of all the things coming together at this point, where retail's just changing. And I think it's really important to note, one of the biggest problems on this slide is you're dealing with a lot of legacy brands, brands that have been around a very long time. And I don't think this is just an anomaly or a moment in time of something happened and therefore their brand has gone down. These are brands, BCBG had been in bankruptcy twice. This was their second go-around. These are brands that have just ultimately outlived their useful life with the consumer and aren't coming back. So it's not just a moment in time. And thus, there are going to be fewer retailers, as you see this trend play out. There will be fewer retailers trying to fill the space. So it's become a real challenge just from a retail perspective across the country. Stuart, next slide. These are just some examples that include some of the spaces at the Point. If you've been to the Point, you can see that we've got a few vacancies there. That project's not immune either. Next slide. These were some headlines that we had presented. And interestingly enough, these were headlines from three years ago. If anything, they're only more exacerbated or more prominent now. But these were headlines, this was happening three years ago. And this is a combination of a shift in consumer behavior, a shift in consumer preferences, what they want, how they want it, and where they get it. And then, of course, it's exacerbated by a global shutdown. But it's interesting that this is not something that is COVID-related, that will go back to some sort of sense of normal when COVID is over. These were systemic changes in retail that were happening years ago and have been in years of the making. Next slide. Again, we've talked about this, just the amount of competition, whether it's Manhattan Village or other cities, and then the changes in preferences. And just ultimately, that you're going to ultimately have less retail square footage in this country. That's just, I believe the statistic, and please don't quote me on this, but I believe the statistic per capita in the United States of retail square foot per capita, I believe, were something like 26 square feet per capita in the United States. And the next closest developed nation is Great Britain at 11. So this was, from a retail consolidation standpoint, also something that needed to be addressed in this country. Next slide. We've been working on this. This is an overall view of the collection. We looked at, since Stuart pointed out, these are almost four distinct projects. We looked at the ability to have an alternate use for the collection that ultimately could add some sales tax revenue by creating more bodies on-site, more daily purchasers on-site. We have ultimately aggregated the PCC that says House Laboratories. That is a new tenant to El Segundo. It is the cosmetics firm founded and owned by Lady Gaga. They've come in and taken over what used to be Luxaton, MAC, Brooks Shoes, Paper Source, BB, and Lululemon. So they've taken the place of five retailers. We have signed a lease now for Building C1, which is currently Anthropologie. That will become an international packaging firm for cosmetics. They're loosely related to House, but they will be taking that. And ultimately, what we're asking for is the ability to turn the building in the middle also to office and create this as an office complex. To the point and the question about sales tax revenue, I think it's really important to note, the Cosmont study effectively showed that what we were doing with all of these moves was actually going to be a net neutral in sales tax revenue compared to what we had before because we were taking out such a significantly low sales tax producer in Cost Plus and replacing it with Nordstrom Rack. And we eliminated Chase Bank, which generated no sales tax, and Sammy's Pizza, which would have been very, very little, and replaced it with Ulta, that was ultimately a much higher performer. So effectively, what we were doing is trying to make the strongest part of our project stronger and take parts of our project that were weak relative to retail sales tax generation and find another way to have them be contributory. Next. This is an image of House Laboratories, which we finished a couple of weeks ago. You'll see on the upper right corner is a parklet that we created on top of the blacktop. It created not only a buffer between the parking and the front of the building so that an office tenant doesn't have somebody parking literally right in front of their store or their glass line, but it also created some interesting ideas of how to make indoor space outdoor and create more of a place there without tearing the whole thing down and starting all over. I think it's a real testament that the bones of the buildings were great. And what we did is we creatively reused them as opposed to scrapping the whole project and starting over. So if you walk out there today and if you've spent any time there in the past, this project, when it was built, sort of went plant or tree, plant or tree, plant or tree. All of a sudden, now is kind of a little bit of a lush oasis, a little bit more in line with the remodel we did at The Works. Next slide. This rendering is what would be the last building. So just a little bit of how we've changed up the facades and the planting and the parklets so you can get a sense of what the project looks like at completion. And with that, I guess, Lisa, unless you have something you want to add, I guess we would open it for questions.
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation. So is it, will there be any additional office at The Works or is it gonna be focused at the collection?
That's to be determined. As you might have seen in recent press, Yoga Works filed Chapter 11 and is closing all 55 locations. Ultimately, a space like that could be used for office. It's a second-floor space. There could be some other quasi-office uses for The Works as well. We have Active Ride that was a very large space that could be conducive to it. We are, as Stuart said, we are a retail company and we are trying to find retail uses. But you need to make the distinguishing factor for us is sales tax and non-sales tax for the purposes of this discussion. There are retailers that want to be here. They tend to be for The Works in the service category. For the Collection, we just were having no success in finding retailers that wanted to be in that part of the project. So could there be offices in The Works? Yes. I would imagine, though, that we'll probably try to stick more to service there. And we'll see what happens down the road with the Yoga Works spaces. We are just about to get it back.
Okay, and then if you did convert both offices or both buildings, the Collection to Office, what would that be the percentage-wise for the entire project? Meaning, how much more real estate would you have to convert to Office if those two buildings were flipped?
Stuart, you might have the tabulations a little bit more handy than I do.
I don't, right off the top of my head, I think that between the two, between the Collection and The Works were at roughly, you know, 100,000 square feet out of, you know, the aggregate 500,000 square feet between Phase 1A and Phase 1B. Those are just rough numbers.
And that would be if you had all of the Collection and all of The Works.
Right. Aggregating the Point into that number.
Okay. And doesn't "Federal," do you maintain your offices at the Point right now?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Any other questions for the applicant?
Wait, can you repeat that percentage again? Did you say that the Collection and The Works together are roughly 20% of the whole project?
They're about 100,000 square feet between the two of them.
They're 20% of the entire area, including the Point. It would be almost 25% of just Plaza El Segundo.
That sounds about right.
Okay, I guess that's what I was looking for. And you guys are asking for 40% of the whole Plaza El Segundo.
That's correct.
So it would be Collection, all the Collection, all The Works, and then another, you know, a lot of space also at Plaza El Segundo, I guess, right? And what we don't know is we don't know where retail is going. You know, for instance, all of these leases are coming up on their next option period in 2021. I can't tell you which of the big box or even of those pad retailers are gonna stay. We lost Sur La Tab to bankruptcy. They closed this location. I don't know what's gonna ultimately come back in there. So that gives us some flexibility so we're not back in on a regular basis saying, okay, we need a little more and a little more and a little more. The primary focus of this project is to maintain it as retail as much as we possibly can. But the definition of retail has changed. Putting aside the taxable, non-taxable, if it were a gym, is that additive or not additive? Or movie theater or entertainment use, is that additive or not additive? Whether it falls into the taxable, non-taxable category.
Do you guys have a sense of what Manhattan Village malls ratio is and/or maybe city staff does?
I don't know the ratio on a square footage basis. I can tell you I have seen the proposed merchandising plan. It is, I would tell you, it's a fair amount of restaurants. I would tell you uh it's a fair amount of restaurants. There are a number of services over there. They're talking about uses, everything from uh on the taxable side, less retails per se, uh like the Shade Store, Skin Spirit, they have a nail salon, a cycling studio, a bar, uh yoga, uh Pilates bar uh studio. Um, a lot of it. It's just sort of a mix of this and that. Uh, I actually uh saw their merchandising plan yesterday. It's not a lot of soft goods retail.
Uh, Commissioner, uh uh staff doesn't have those numbers for Manhattan Beach, uh the Manhattan Village, unfortunately.
That's okay. That's all right. Jeff Jeff answered that uh satisfactor for me. Thanks.
It's my understanding that the city will receive some benefit if these off these these buildings are turned into offices, that there's an employee tax and there's business license tax. How is that going to figure into the income for the city?
Uh, I will just take a uh uh I'll just attempt to give you at least a short answer on that. The you are correct that the those businesses will be paying a business tax that's based on square footage and the employee count. And uh, the Cosmont report did uh have some numbers uh showing that there will be some uh increase in business tax uh revenues uh as a result of converting uh s- space into uh office. Uh, that's kind of my my short answer. Uh, we'll uh try to look through the Cosma report, see if I can find some specific numbers, Commissioner.
Thank you.
But Carol, I think the point of that report was that we'll benefit from having just more people at the shopping center who will then have lunch, buy goods. We're basically bringing more people into town who may have lunch downtown. So it's looking more of the holistic impact of just more bodies working in El Segundo.
Yeah, it looks like this is going to be sort of like a like a Playa Vista almost, except there's no housing involved. But I agree that getting people into the area in an office, they're going to go buy lunch. They're going to have their dry cleaning done. They're going to have their nails done. They're going to pick up a gift for their mother-in-law, hopefully.
Right, right.
Um, Paul, do you have a sense of what the current inventory in El Segundo is for commercial office space? And and including stuff in the works? There's a lot of development happening now.
Uh, Commissioner Heschler, we're talking about millions of uh square feet of uh office space. Uh, I I don't have exact numbers, but uh it's millions, yeah.
Yeah, and one thing that just point out about, you know, getting office tenants and other service type uses into the center is that, you know, the more these vacancies persist out there and increase, it really does have a snowballing effect. So it it can start to bring down other retailers. It's 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 not a good thing to not have these spaces occupied with something.
Good question there, Mr. McDonald. Are you concerned about um being able to even fill the office spaces? If uh the city were to appear to approve tonight, obviously, it would make sense, but are you concerned about um about filling those empty spaces, even if they don't have to be the eighty twenty retail versus not retail?
Um, not 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 really, to be honest with you. So um very, very quietly, um, you probably noticed you've heard virtually nothing about this conversion. Uh, we've leased two of the three buildings. Now granted, we have the third building, which is the largest one uh yet to go, but we have really not started any formal marketing. What's interesting, first of all, I I think a good point to Stuart's earlier point, these are two new companies coming into El Segundo. They're not moving around within El Segundo. So these are net new bodies, net new purchasers coming in. But um, we think we've actually hit on something. We didn't understand it at the time, but in a post-COVID world where you've been convinced that touching an elevator button could potentially be the end of you. There are people who are saying, I want out of big urban downtowns. Uh, I don't want to be in big city centers such as downtown LA or Century City. I want to be closer to home. I don't want to commute. I want flexible space that people can work openly in or or, you know, more collaboratively. I want fresh air. And I want to be able to walk out, lock the door, and I control my space. So this actually it may just be uh the right product at the right time. Is it a guarantee that we'll get at least quickly? No, but um I'm encouraged by the fact that uh House Laboratories took fourteen thousand square feet and Garland took, or I'm sorry, Concord uh took eleven thousand square feet with virtually no marketing and seeing it as retail space and having to envision what it would look like as office space. So.
Yeah, I mean, to add to that, you know, the you can see from this image that it's very high bay clearance, a lot of open space in these open plans and, you know, a lot of these tenants like this garage door kind of effect that you see here of just being able to open a garage door and walk directly into an outdoor amenity space. It's sort of the antithesis of a traditional high-rise class A office building.
And I'll I'll add to that one other one other note. We have seen a a trend over the past several years of amenitized office space. Uh, it used to be that you go into a ten-story office building and your amenity was there might be a little uh snack shop in the in the lobby, uh and then you had to walk three blocks to find a new place to eat lunch. We found a real trend towards being in complete environments. Environments where you could do your shopping on your lunch hour, you can do whatever you need to do whenever you need to do it, and it's not just an office building kind of isolated. Uh, this this uh location really offers a fully amenitized area. You've got the daily needs of everything from Container Store to Dick's and everything in between. You have some services. You can work out, you can go to the point, you can do all these things without ever getting in your car during the day. You you arrive and you leave, but other than that, there's no need to be in your car. And and just to clarify, I I saw uh Elavon was uh was cited as an example of a of a center that's doing well. This stuff is for lease. This is not for sale commercial, correct? Correct.
All right, any other questions from the dais for the applicant? All right. Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. I will now open public communication on the off chance there's anyone else in chambers wishing to address the commission on this item.
No, no one in the chambers.
Thank you, Eduardo. All right, I will now uh close public communication. All further comments shall come from the dais. Who would like to start this evening?
I'll start. I think that it's Carol, you or me?
No, go ahead.
Uh, I I think that it's uh it makes perfect sense. Um, we approved the point with a sixty-five thirty-five uh ratio originally. Um, because clearly they came before the city looking for some flexibility. Um, when that project started, which was after Plaza El Segundo. And uh for me, I I think it makes good sense they to not tie the hands of the of the of the managers of these large um properties. Um, it's not a good thing when they're empty. They need to be filled with a uh combination of businesses, retail or otherwise. Um, yeah, the the retail sector has changed a lot, but um I think there's a good blend. There's always going to be a need for brick and mortar and the services that they provide along with other amenities. So I'm I'm I have no problems with what they're asking, and I would be willing to move forward with it.
I agree with what Brenda said, and I think the way of life is changing, especially with a point that was made about high-rise buildings. Especially, you know, I it's very possible that people will bounce back from this pandemic and go right back to the way that they were, but I think that's pretty doubtful. I think people are getting used to they're moving out of the core cities and they're getting used to working away from the city core. And this is a very attractive project. I want to echo what Brenda said. You don't want an empty mall. You don't want empty storefronts. It looks like a ghost town and it's scary. So I I think it looks like a good idea.
Um, yeah, you know, I'm I'm torn. It's uh I I love retail. I love the idea of retail, but I also realize that the world is changing. Um, you know, there's a lot of sad malls in America these days. And uh I sat on a ULI panel this week where we talked about what's going to happen to the malls. And one of the saddest solutions was Amazon coming in and taking all, you know, million square feet of a mall and turning it into their thing. It's like, wow, Amazon's just going to keep being the juggernaut that it is. Um, you guys cited some case studies in your report, other malls, uh the Laguna deal, uh Westwood Pavilion, I think, and uh maybe the um the Crenshaw deal. Um, good examples. But the thing all of those places have going for them is a component of residential or nearby residential. And, you know, bodies are such an important part of the flow of of a commercial development, you know, getting people in, having it vibrant, having it activated, having it programmed. And so I I wonder if the bigger conversation as we look at this is is what is, how does residential fit into this? You know, we're looking at arena numbers. I realize this is off topic or what we're talking about now, but it's but it's really an important topic to what the future of development is in our town. Paul mentioned millions of square footage of uh of available inventory in El Segundo, and that's awesome, but I'm also terrified of, uh, you know, are we going to have ghost towns of commercial property as well a year from now? So, um, you know, I I I don't think I don't think this zoning issue is going to solve all the problems in El Segundo right now. I think we're 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 in we're in in, we're about to embark on a big, big ride for for the unknown when it comes to unused commercial space.
Yeah, Commissioner, uh, Heschler, this is Stuart again. I'd I'd like to respond to that because I I I do echo that concern about the balance.
Mr. McDonald, procedurally, um, I'm going to need to open back public communication. So let me do that, and then you're happy to make your comment. Go ahead, sir. You may you make out. I've opened public communication now, so go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Um, I I I do share that concern, and I think ultimately, you know, the having residential blended in here would truly make for a much more vibrant and sustainable uh mixed-use center. I think that one of the challenges we are faced when and we are looking at a lot of residential developments in Northern California, as well as the the construction costs to rent picture just is not promising for market rate and affordable housing right now. But I think furthermore, we may have a deed restriction issue on these properties due to the contaminated soils and Lisa, I don't know. Can you opine on that point?
I would be shocked if you did not.
Yes, that property is deed restricted, um, along with much of the other their product site and the other properties. That's why all you could do is that surface parking lot over at the point. So it cannot be remediated for residential levels.
Yeah, and 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 obviously the city, uh, the 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 current code does not allow for any residential over there anyway, so. But but I understand your your point of uh of it, the original brownfield.
Okay, I will uh procedurally close uh public communications. Jay, any anything further in comments?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Well, well, thank you for hitting the hot topic topic of residential east of PCH. But we're we're dealing with a development agreement for this property, and the planning commission over the years has always been, in my opinion, uh very helpful in making accommodations. I remember when gas prices were spiked and the previous owner came because they wanted to have like a moped electronic scooter store at the time, and we allowed that. Um, I I know from my personal experience visiting the site that the collection and especially the works have always been struggling. And it has nothing to do with how federal has maintained these properties. They've always been immaculate. They've always been beautiful. It's just the works is hidden from PCH. Uh, we we approved them to to build a sign taller than anything we've ever seen to try to get people over there. So they have been trying, uh, from what I've seen, to try to make retail work. And I think it's incumbent upon us to help them if they're telling us this is a solution to increase occupancy, make sure that this project succeeds as a whole, and to bring more people to El Segundo. Uh, I I absolutely support it. Uh, the photos we're looking at right now are are pristine. I'm shocked that makeup company needs that much space, but what do I know about makeup? Um, but based on the reports we have that have been peer reviewed, saying it's going to be a net wash as far as income to the city. Uh, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't approve this. Uh, I think it's a great plan, and uh I'm I'm looking forward to approving it. Uh, any other comments? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number two eight eight eight.
And I will. With, wait, hold on, we have to remember.
With with the judgment, with adjustments as discussed by staff.
Yeah, with amendment to, what was the item, Paul? So we have a.
Number forty, can updated condition of appeal number forty.
Okay. So let me make a new motion.
So moved, yes, please.
Let me get on the right page here. Okay, let me make a motion to approve uh the Plaza El Segundo and the Point Development Agreement EA twelve seventy-nine and amendments thereto, including the amendment to item condition forty as recommended by staff. Can I have a second for that motion, please?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a vote now, a roll call vote, please, Venus.
Yes, Chair Baldino.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wingate.
Aye.
Commissioner Heschler.
Aye.
And Commissioner Keldoff in her absence.
All right, the the uh motion passes. Uh, thank you all for the presentation. Okay, our next item on the agenda is continued business. Uh, item I six is a zone text amendment to amend chapter fifteen one fifteen four of title fifteen, the El Segundo municipal code regarding definitions and site development standards in such a zone. It's EA twelve sixty-two, and we're being asked to continue this item until further notice by staff and the applicant. So I'll accept a motion to do so.
I make a motion. Yeah.
Okay.
Move to further notice.
Okay, Carol makes a motion. Brenda has a second to move this item until further notice. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Venus?
Yes, Chair Baldino.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wingate.
Aye.
Commissioner Heschler.
Aye.
And Commissioner Keldoff.
Okay, the item is continued. Thank you. Next is item agenda, item I seven. And this is a variance for an accessory dwelling unit at four oh four East Maple Avenue. And we're being asked to continue this item until November twelfth, twenty twenty, planning commission meeting. So I'll go ahead.
I think we.
Chair Baldino, if I may.
We got a notice.
Please, um, one of one of the correspondence that was distributed uh is a uh request from the applicant um to actually continue this to the December meeting. So if.
December what?
Uh, which would be the.
Ten.
Yeah, yes.
Ten.
Thank you. Okay, at the request of the applicant, the planning commission has been requested to continue this item until December tenth, twenty twenty. I'll go ahead and make the motion to continue the item. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Chairman Wingate seconds, and can we have a roll call vote, please, Venus?
Yes, Chair Baldino.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wingate.
Aye.
Commissioner Heschler.
Aye.
And Commissioner Keldoff is absent.
All right, motion passed. Thank you, Venus. Next continued item is termination of precise plan eighty-seven oh one for environmental assessment number EA twelve eighty and precise plan amendment number PPA twenty oh one. And again, we're being asked to continue this until November twelfth, twenty twenty. So I'll go ahead and make the uh motion to continue this item to the November twelfth, twenty twenty, planning commission meeting. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Mister, um, Chair Baldino.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wingate.
Aye.
Commissioner Heschler.
Aye.
And Commissioner Keldoff in absent.
All right, thank you. The item's been continued. Next on the agenda is report from our building, planning, building safety director, or designees, and Sam is on vacation. Do we have a report? planning, building safety director or designees, and Sam is on vacation. Do we have a report?
Yes, Sam is on vacation. He'll be returning uh, next week, uh, next Wednesday. And then uh, just to follow up, uh, as the commission is now aware of, um, and uh, my colleague Paul Smarz had emailed the commission, uh, just to let you all know that Greg McLean has moved on uh, a couple of weeks ago. And so um, in the meantime, uh, Paul, Venus and I will kind of be handling all the planning commission issues uh, that, that come before you and making sure the staff reports are done and prepared. And we'll still, you know, hopefully continue on seamlessly and, and at the same time, I'd like to at least take this opportunity, uh, to uh, at least virtually thank uh, Mr. McLean for his dedicated years of service to us and his leadership. Uh, he will definitely be missed.
Here, here.
Agreed. Thank you for those comments, Eduardo. He was always uh, always resourceful and reliable during meetings. Um, okay, that brings us next to planning commissioner comments. Any comments, anybody?
Stay safe, stay happy, wash your hands, wear a mask.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, for Eduardo and Paul, if I could request at our next meeting to get an update on the number of ADU permits that have been pulled, square footage of each ADU permit. Uh, and I don't think it'd give me a vocation, but I'd like to know the general area. Uh, I think everyone knows I was uh, less than thrilled with the city council amendments to the planning commission recommendations on ADU. And I like to keep track on how these are being developed and built in the city and how it's going to change the face of what El Segundo is. Uh, that kind of goes hand in hand with the letter I was received that I forwarded to all the planning commissioners from a housing advocacy group in Los Angeles that is keeping an eye on what El Segundo does with respect to its housing and will look at house requirements to meet the state standards. That being said, I would like staff just to report back on what, where we are today on the ADUs. Is that all right?
Will do.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh, any other comments from the planning commissioners? No, if not, that brings us to adjournment. It's always great to see your smiley faces. And we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be November twelfth, twenty twenty uh, at planning, at city council chambers and on Zoom. All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Good to see you all.
Good to see you too.